I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Fraser Town Board to order on Wednesday, November 2nd at 6:06 PM. Roll call, please.
Katie Souls.
I'm Quinn.
Brian Circumning.
Oh, Eileen Waldo. I would, I'd like an approval of the agenda.
I move to second.
All in favor? Opposed? And now, how about the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the October 5th, 2022?
Minutes. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we move on to open forum, which is business not on the agenda. And in the future, if you'd like to request time on the agenda, please contact the town clerk. Is there anyone in the room that has anything to say? How about online?
So are people.
What?
Those are our people, right?
Okay, I guess so.
Moving on.
Okay, so. Nothing for open forum. Now we'll move to the discussion and possible action regarding the 2023 draft final budget. Rob?
Thank you. So what you have in front of you is the draft, the 2023 draft budget in the format that we'd be submitting to the state that shows the prior three years, the current actuals and the year-to-date estimates with our draft budget for 2023. This has gotten to all funds balance right now. We're excited about that. The year and estimate and actuals will change as we get through the rest of the year. Those will continue to evolve, but that will not have an impact now on the 2023 budget. The other item is the JFOC budget. And that one I did not print out, and I apologize for that. It's the same one that we reviewed at the last board meeting. It's in the packet, but not in the printouts in front of you. In this, and I consulted with Joe on this to work through that. It will go through the JFOC on next Thursday and then be disseminated to the other sanitation districts for their final board approvals in the subsequent weeks, which will then circle back to us for the final approvals on the 16th. So everybody will have a chance to look at that. The only change in there I made was per Mayor Van Nell's recommendation on the management fees. And putting that in, it has not been changed in the last three years that I saw in the prior budgets, and so I put an escalation in that moving forward.
Is it based on a percentage?
Percentage.
Can you tell us what that was?
Yeah, I did a 6% looking at this year because that's matching the inflation rate and where things sit. And then a 3% going forward in future budgets.
Which line is that?
It's JFOC. It is, if you look, so it's split out because it goes across a couple of funds. In Fund 40, it's at down at the very bottom on line 85, if you're looking at it online. And that's, it's the management fee. And for Fund 40, that fee is billed to Grand County Number One and Winter Park Ranch. We don't bill ourselves. And then in Fund 50, it's split out with with 40% to Northern and then Grand County Number One and Winter Park Ranch divide each doing a 60% share. And that's lines 218 and 219.
So is that percentage based on the previous management fees or it's not based on the budget of the JFOC?
It's based on the previous management fees.
Would it? Would it make sense to base it on the budget?
Probably not, since it's the same work regardless.
So when you said, go ahead. You have more questions? Just way on the town of Fraser. So you had to do some good manipulating to get it to balance.
Not manipulating, but moving things around.
Moving things around.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Is there some places that changed a bit from the last review that you want to bring to our attention?
Trying to think, I did not do any big material changes in the future budget. Most of it's around the unassigned balances that we were able to clip tighten up those numbers on this year's budget to know what we were projecting forward. So it was much more less about moving stuff around a lot in next year's budget and more about fine tuning what we had in this year's budget and knowing what was carrying forward and where it was carrying forward. So nothing, nothing that was super material. I'm trying to think of if I've made any big changes that I've called out. It did move our projections on sales tax revenue up $100,000. That was the biggest impact on the revenue side where we are. And that was a, where we've been ultra conservative in the past. Trying to bring that more in line with where we think things are going and where they seem to be projecting right now. And that, the idea there was if inflation persists, then sales tax will be a little bit higher. But our expenses are also higher, so in the end it's truly a wash, but I needed to anchor a little bit higher revenues to make everything balance well.
And I mean, $100,000 is less than a percent, right?
Yep.
And how many positions did we add in public works?
Technically, we did not.
Let's say between what would that would have been in 2022. And then we increased salaries.
Yes, we didn't add any FTEs. We actually trimmed FTEs because we, but we held vacant positions through most of 2022 because we had positions assigned to public works. For instance, a project manager used to be a public works position. It was not filled. We just filled it a month, a month and a half ago. But that moved under admin.
We do have a public works manager now?
Yes.
Almost?
Yes. Paul Johnson accepted the offer. It was a conditional offer. We've met the conditions. He'll be here on Monday. And kind of a final tour of the town and the, and the final kind of conditions and such being met there. He, it would require a move, so start date has not been fixed.
Okay, cool.
Not to go too far off topic, but where is he from?
Virginia. Just outside of Richmond? Or, yeah.
Have we looked at how recession's going to affect our sales tax?
Yeah, I'm kind of going back through historical. Kind of what Eileen had asked me to do, looking at the 2008 recession. We tend to maintain for about a year or two after the initial recession. And then later, it's instead of taking a major hit, we tend to stabilize and not grow as much. And what we're seeing right now is people are still booking for vacations and such. They're still planning to take those vacations. Or they've already, already booked and they're not canceling them. Airbnb just posted their biggest quarter because people are still booking out those vacations.
There are certain areas that are down 20%,
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I figure because we're close to Denver, we're still a driving distance rather than a plane flight. And we're going to still see more front range traffic. And that's been consistent since we've been talking about the recession for the last four or five months. And we've actually been seeing higher and higher driving numbers coming on Highway 40. So it's, yeah, I, it's, it's painful, but I feel like it's, it's more resilient. I did bring things down in terms of our revenue expectations, looking at use taxes and other things like that where if building slows down. But if we're looking at just pure sales tax, people are still buying groceries.
Any other questions? Okay, so, so the next meeting is a public hearing?
Correct.
So we only have to have one public hearing?
Correct. And so this will have two weeks of where this will be posted. The next meeting, it can go through public hearing. We can make adjustments if we needed to. And final budgets due to the state by January 31st, so we're ahead of schedule. And I do want to show two things that we are including in our budget presentations. One being the large sheet.
Here.
This is what Louis had asked for at one point. It's a little blurry because we had to convert to a picture real quickly on Excel. But the idea is it is a flow chart of kind of where funds go within our budget. So it's a little easier to understand than the spreadsheet that we've been looking at. The other piece is, Leslie, can you make me a host? Yes. Gotcha. Oh, that's why. I just wanted to share a couple of things. One is like, let's see, the Excel spreadsheet that you've been seeing. This is basically, we've moved the budget and accounting and everything into a ClearGov format. These numbers are off in the sense that they, the way ClearGov has built our budget, it double counts things because general fund gets moved into other places. So some of the expenses are double counted, some of the revenues are double counted. But this is the idea that across all of our funds, including JFOC, is rolled into one place where you can look at the whole fund. You can look at individual funds within it. You can get down into the department views and say, hey, we have a public works project. You want to see where we are with the wastewater capital projects? And you can get down to the object views, which is getting to the, kind of the detail within the budget. This all rolls up. It becomes exactly what the spreadsheet that you've been seeing, but visually makes it a lot easier for someone who does not doesn't like to read spreadsheets as much. It's going to make it a little bit easier for folks to understand. And so we can look at, I will just pull up one here. You can drill into any of our funds and basically get a quick snapshot of where your expenses are, where your revenues are, where the funding streams are coming from, where you have been historically. And I'm excited about this in the sense that it's also going to allow us to, you're going to eventually be invited as reviewers. So you can basically look at this and say, hey, I have a question about this. And it posts to me, and then there's a response. We could open up certain views to the public through our website. So it's a really quick way to track things. But so the, a capital project will be in here and you'll be able to see, okay, here's where we are in this process in the capital project. We've got the engineering fees done. We've got the permits here. And this is where we're in the construction phases all the way through the end of the project. So this is a kind of an extra layer of accountability for us. And basically this all breaks down into expenses and revenues and where they come from and kind of over unders. So kind of a nice visual. This is, it's, still takes a little bit to, to make it make sense because of the way JFOC rolls into this. Because I can't set up a whole separate budget for them. But they, they grandfather in and we're kind of filtering that stuff out. So there would be a town view and a JFOC view, which is what we're used to seeing.
So will there eventually be a link on our website?
It'll either be a link or a, a, a bottom bar is what a lot of towns have done. And basically it's like, here's, here's where our revenues in terms are on track. Here's where our expenses are. And here's your snapshot as we go through the year. It doesn't automatically update. We have to push the data into it. So for the first year, for 2023, I'm looking at quarterly updates to just to make sure that we don't have any kinks in it. And that way we'll have kind of those, those, each quarter will have a push into it that shows where, where we are as, as the town progresses. So. Any questions?
A good communication tool.
Yeah, this is cool. I like that.
What?
I like that. I like that ClearGov view.
It, it hits a lot of our targets from an accountability and transparency standpoint. It also conforms to a lot of the ADA website requirements now. So like the spreadsheets now become, have an auditory component and such. So, and Colorado passed new rules around websites. So it will be, they don't go into effect until 2024, but this will be something that I think will help us with our kind of the future push on ADA accessibility for a lot of elements within town. It also extends to our websites and digital platforms, so.
Hey, John Stavney, Northwest Call to Council of Governments here for the manager discussion. But I want to compliment you on that, that website work with ClearGov. When, and I think you guys have seen a copy of this survey we did earlier in the year. And you're on, I can't say the cutting edge, but you're definitely on the forefront among our member jurisdictions in terms of doing this transparency tool. And I, I can't, I think that seven or 10 years from now, this is going to be a standard. Everybody's going to be either required or it's going to be embarrassing not to be doing this because this is such an outstanding tool for citizens to be able to see what's going on in a more digestible way than looking through, I don't remember, 100-page review budget, 100-page budget or whatever, and try to glean what they want to know. And I didn't play with your website, but many of the tools allow citizens to sort of do searches and kind of configure things to their questions, which I just want to compliment Todd Fraser and who, and whoever moved in this direction because it's, it's absolutely the right move and worth every penny of, and every bit of effort that staff's put into it. And it is effort. I'll just acknowledge that.
Thanks, John.
And it's not live yet on our website. This is, this is the beta version. And I want to go through and really get a couple of things squared away. Brian and Louis will be able to have first access to it from the finance committee. And then, and then we will be rolling that out to the website once we have basically the final budget approved and I get that uploaded to ClearGov. So we should be close. Any other budget questions?
Okay, thank you. And then you're up next. Oh. Ed, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to comment again on the budget. Rob's done a great job of getting this up to speed. As you recall, it was last year when Beth was still with us that we made the transition and purchased the ClearGov software. Not only will it help, you know, citizens who are just curious, it'll help trustees. It helps me, it helps departments as well for us to be able to dig down and see on a dashboard where we are without having to go through a spreadsheet and just doing the math and pulling out calculators. This helps us tremendously. And I think it's just a great transparent tool. I'm glad to see it finally rolling out. Rob's done a great job to get that populated.
Okay. Great. Okay, then Rob, you're up next for the town manager transition plan. And John, we know is on, online.
Great. We have the postings in the packets. Everything is ready to go in terms of a job posting and putting out the job description and listing it out on sites. From an HR standpoint, my objective is a fairly, I'll say aggressive timeline in terms of getting stuff out because it needs to be posted for 30 days. And that puts us into early December. And then with the holidays and such, it gets, it slows down hiring tremendously. And so, but my goal would be to, in early December, have interviews, initial interviews and setting up kind of who would like to be on that committee and, and having those screening interviews. Then more of a panel type interview. And then in January, being able to move to hiring. I don't want to wait too long because I think overlap is going to be critical in this, in this transition. And so that's, that's the big push that I would like to have. And then John, I know helps in the past, and I would like to defer to John and Ed on other details. But that's my, my HR plug from this.
Thanks, Rob. And just real quick, John, John is joining us tonight. He's kind of between meetings. He said he could work us in. I appreciate John joining us here. But as you see in, in your, in your packet, I put together a staff report, listed a couple of options. I'm comfortable and I would recommend, highly recommend that we, we utilize John Stavney again. He's been very successful with the town. He knows the town, he knows the area, and he can help with the process tremendously. So at this point, I'll just turn that over to John and let him introduce himself and, and talk about what he can do for us.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. And first of all, thank you for the honor of asking me again. I take that as a high compliment after two go, two rounds of it here. It's, it's, I, I respect that and appreciate that. Thank you. So at the point that Fraser, you know, in, was it 2019, was without a manager. I was, was asked to, I don't remember exactly how it came about, but came to help out. And my concern in those situations is when there's especially been a long time manager and the rest of staff hasn't been through a search process before, there's a lot of potential turmoil and questions and things can really go sideways within organization. And so my first order of business was to urge you to get an interim manager, which is not an issue right now. You have that effectively as your manager, as your manager, not effectively in this transition. So you have leadership and somebody to communicate with staff what's going on. And second, you've been through this twice recently. Antoine App's been through it and I haven't met Rob, but already impressed in, in five minutes that you have staff that can structure this. So in when I stepped in before, I wanted to make sure that the announcement was correct, that the board had somebody that they could, you know, lean upon with, with questions and, and somebody to give them frank advice, which was what I was, you know, hope, hope that's what you took away from that. This situation is a little different. And I actually think option three, staff structuring this, scheduling this, and really taking care of a lot of the details with a little bit of option two, as much as the board wants to be involved. I don't really need to help edit the documents unless you want me to or, you know, reflect upon things like just, just knowing that you need to have it open for 30 days and, and not two weeks and, and things like that. Sounds like you, you, you have that, that internal knowledge base now. So what I would suggest is that if it's the board's pleasure that I would assist staff in maybe reviewing applications, whoever the selected staff is who does that and weigh in with some of my experience of seeing, you know, and knowing perhaps some people across the state and in terms of applicants potentially, and also just giving a different perspective from just inside the town. Would love to do that. And then as much as the board would like, be there through the actual day or two or whatever it is of interviews or series of interviews to, you know, be there for, for perspective and as much advice as you want and be another voice at the table besides, you know, manager cannon. So that, that's the sort of what I would suggest. I, I don't think there's a need for me to, I don't, I don't want to say, I don't know how to put this, but, you know, Antoine App was great before, but she just hadn't done it before and really didn't, you know, she had a lot of questions about, you know, where should I post this? You know, just little details and, and I, and I, and I'm happy to answer any of those or help out with those. But I don't think my time is necessary with your level of expertise with staff for a lot of those, those, the steps, the structuring of it, if that makes sense. I'll stop there.
Do you look outside the government managers? People that have, you look for people that are outside the government that aren't?
Sure.
Another town manager, never been a town manager.
Absolutely. You know, there's experience translates and, you know, and Ed, if I, if I recall, you know, you know, military is government too, but you know, that's another, another perspective. He's been in town management for a while, but you know, that was a question I, you know, I know came up like, oh, is that relevant? You know? And so I think there's a lot of people that have done different kinds of management. And I would be one of those people, you know, I came, I was a construction manager, a lot of public experience from boards. And, you know, a lot of it is fit with the organization. Base knowledge, right? Do they, have they worked with budgets? Have they worked with boards a little bit? Are, are they really going to be blindsided? Or when you talk to them and interview them, do they seem experienced enough to understand, you know, the basics of that? Have they ever been to a public meeting, right? You know, that'd be a big flag if they haven't. But I've met plenty of people with outstanding business that wasn't, so to speak, in government, who have gone on to be outstanding managers. Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, some people with knowledge of the area, right? That's, that, that can be another factor too. Do they understand Fraser? Do they understand the sort of like landscape of Grand County, not the physical landscape, but the, you know, personal landscape of, of Grand County, if you will, and have management experience? That may outweigh certain people with, with other kinds of government experience. So, yeah. And one of the, one of the reasons I like to be involved in these, that's different from what a lot of recruiters do. And recruiters do great work and bring in some great candidates. They tend to try to bring in three or five, what they consider no fail candidates, right? So they want, they often want to bring you three or five people who already have 10 plus years' experience. They may even be at the end of their careers because those are safe bets, right? And they don't often dig and understand in organizations who might be an excellent candidate who has been a director at a nearby county or a nearby town or been, you know, doing what Michael's been doing for Fraser, wouldn't necessarily get on the radar screen if you were by, say, for, you know, a manager in Summit County. Does that make sense? So I really like to see in the application process being open to some of those somewhat unconventional candidates if, if they, you know, do check some of the boxes.
So to piggyback a little bit on what John was talking about, of course, I've, I've run a lot of recruitments for department directors. I even ran a town manager recruitment when I was in Illinois. You know, the notifications, when we post a job on our website, it goes out on Indeed, which has a broad reach outside of, you know, the government's circle. We would also recommend posting the job ad on CML, Colorado Municipal League, the Colorado City County Managers Association, and also on the, the ICMA, which is the International The Colorado City County Managers Association, and also on the internet, the ICMA, which is the International. City County Management Association. You're going to get, you're going to get nationwide coverage. You're going to get both in, in the private sector and also in the public sector coverage on that. You can keep your costs down to about three to five hundred dollars for the, all the advertisements. Our job ad will tweak that a little bit. It needs to be updated because it's about a year and a half old. The timeline that's in your packet, again, that was just simply a sample of what John provided previously. And I would be working with John and also with senior staff there to establish what that timeline would look like when we post the ad. When we close that, when we hold interviews and so forth. Staff has the capacity to do this. One of the things we struggle with is having the time. But we'll be handling most of the work on the recruitment if you choose to go that direction. And I think we could have a very successful recruitment. We can do it and not quickly, but we can do it in expedient manner. But also we'll be able to save money tremendously over going around a hiring firm or recruitment firm. Town manager recruitments through a recruitment firm can run anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand dollars. And I'm not sure that that is necessary for here in Frazier. We certainly have the expertise and with John's. Advice and guidance, I think that if the board is, is happy with that decision. We can have a very successful recruitment over the next two, three months.
I got an email from a constituent that had a couple of questions. This first was about the salary range. And obviously, this is a year and a half ago that we're looking at, but. Just, I guess, John and Ed, do you guys feel like if we increase that to, say, two hundred K at the top end? Do you think we would get a different pool of candidates than we are if, if we stuck to that one nineteen to one seventy-eight K?
That's, that's a good question, but it's a complicated question, Brian. You know, we did a salary study about a year and a half ago, which, which looked at where Frazier pleased its staff. Including the, the top position, the, the town manager position. And we, we did that study in relationship where we fit within comparable communities, how we fit within. Grand County and in mountain communities and so forth like that. I would. Yes, if you, if you increase the rent to two hundred thousand dollars, you'd probably get a few more candidates. However, there's, there's a capacity that the town has as far as affordability as well. You know, our salary structures are based on a lot of different, different factors, you know, cost of living. It's, it's based on comparable jobs, it's based on proper delineation to, to keep salary compression from happening. I think you could find a, a good manager for the, their existing salary range, which I believe is between. I think one thirty and about one eighty, I believe. So that's, that's a pretty solid salary range. That you can, that you can shoot for. And I'm not sure that two hundred thousand dollars would be. A, a good, a good target for Frazier.
I concur with Manager Cannon's comments on that, although I would be interested in looking at those Grand County comps that you have. And it's wage, wage range analysis. I just did it for CAG last summer, not this summer, the summer before. Really complicated. And, you know, we've got in our region, some counties that are paying. Direct program directors who only have, not a program director like Public Works that might have three hundred people under them. But, you know, somebody who's like an open space director in Eagle or Summit County who may have two or three employees, but run a program. Might be paid one eighty, right? Are you going to try to compete with that? Or, you know, as your, your object would be above that? I think the real question is, you know, how does that land? The numbers that Ed said, the sort of one thirty to one eighty. I think the one nineteen is a little bit low. Are, you're going to get a pretty good applicant pool, I think, from that. People aren't going to scoff at it. I will say the first question that most people are going to have is, do you have, what about housing? Do you have a high housing stipend? Do you have a, a manager's residence already? You know, and so you may want to save your powder, so to speak, if, if you're in a negotiation and you, you're willing to do two hundred and you post one eighty. Maybe, maybe you save that powder for a discussion if it comes up about a monthly stipend or. You know, various ways you might work that out, a down payment assistance, if that's necessary.
The other question was, how expansive is the search? Obviously, John, you, you have a lot of contacts here in Colorado and. That definitely is, you know, that's one of the reasons why we want you to do the search, but what about outside of Colorado?
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, people outside Colorado look at CML and Indeed. And, you know, if you're in a search mode as a manager and you're willing to move out of your state. You know, you're looking at that CML website or, you know, CCCMA's website, that's the Colorado City Mana, Manager, City County Manager Association. And yes, what people do oftentimes is they call new people. If I'm in Kansas and I'm a manager and I'm thinking about this, or I'm, you know, I'm, I'm going to call somebody I know in Colorado and ask some questions and. You know, the manager circles are, you know, it's, it's a large group, but it's not that large. And so, yeah, and that's one of the reasons you want to leave it open for thirty days or so too, because. You know, those shorter durations have a couple downsides. One is if it's, say, two weeks. That, that's a flag to me that you already know who you're going to hire, right? It's like, well, it's a perfunctory thing that we're even posting this. Two weeks, I didn't even hear about something for a week, and then you've given me a few days to do my soul searching about whether I want to even be in Frazier, the right job. Do a little, and then do the application, right? So thirty days or so allows, or even longer, but I think thirty days is a good number. Allows for it to percolate a little bit, right? And, and people to talk about it and some people that are tuning in and watch some meetings like this and see how y'all work. And, and people to talk and, and recommend to each other, hey, there's an opening in Frazier. I think that would be a good fit for you. And, and people do that kind of thing. I certainly do that kind of thing. And I'm sure Ed and other people in Grand County would be doing that, you know, people they know. Who might be a good fit. You, you have those conversations and you don't have them necessarily in a real short window, but, yeah, I think I made the point with that.
And the, the ICMA website, it's actually a worldwide website. So when I've posted jobs on the ICMA before, and I've gotten applicants from South Africa, Australia. You know, it's, it's, that's kind of a stretch, but it just does expand, explain the, the reach of that kind of website. And I agree with John, the thirty days, you know, if you, if you put it out for less than that, it sends a signal. So thirty day, thirty day recruitment is good. And to piggyback on what John said, my first manager's job. I got a call from a, an ICMA retired manager, who is one of the senior advisors. And he said, Ed, you need to look at this job. They're posting this. They had a conversation with me and I, I said, you might want to talk to Ed Cannon. And then I got a second call from somebody else back at the school where I graduated from, because they reset to them. And, and that motivated me to, to look a little bit deeper at that job. And so, yeah, the word gets out, you know, we, we, we are kind of a. Tight knit group to some degree. And, and we, we all kind of share the same kind of goals and ambitions. So. You know, advertising on those three sites plus I, indeed, I think would give you all the covers that you need.
And that would attract the unusual applicants that Parnell was talking about.
You'd be surprised.
You'd be surprised, but I also think those are community conversations, Parnell, for, for prompting, you know. In your, you know, chamber circles or business circles, that, those are where you start to have those comments, just same kind of thing that Ed and they're talking about. You, you're like, hey, this has been open, you take it, take a few days and you start tapping people and, and letting them know. That, that happens not just in the manager circles. And, and you can, you can say in your advertisement that you're, you're open, you know, qualifications and the language is escaping me at the right now, but. You know, that other combinations of experience will be considered or something to that effect. Which, which I think is really important to say something like that, that keeps the door open for you to go, hmm, this is not a traditional fit. But, you know, how much that person is on fire about this job, gets it. Gets the community relatively quickly and can be aligned with the board is as important as anything, frankly. You know, that can, that can be, you know, somebody who has absolutely no experience, but has that a worry of. But somebody who's got some decent like experience that is really, you know, enthused and you're enthused about that applicant. That'll go a long, long ways. That's, that's, that gives, you know, it's worth a lot, I always put it that way. That I do, and I, and I'll say again, I, I didn't look, I know you just used my previous memo, but. It is really critical to include staff in one level of, at least one level of the interviews. Maybe even in some of the screening, it doesn't have to be a bunch of staff, but a few key staff because. They see those candidates a little bit differently and they have. Sometimes some red flags that, that the rest of us wouldn't see, or the other way around, they see some, you know, some things that, you know. So those of us who've been in the business for a while might not see, you know, as positives. So definitely include staff.
That, that brings up a question for Antonette. You were, John mentioned you. And how do you feel about the workload and?
I, at this point in time, now that I, we've hired a deputy clerk, it has freed me some time to help out to do more. Items like this. And I think. Now that Rob is wrapping up the budget season, it'll free him up some time there also. So I feel like staff, now that we're fully staffed again. We do have more ability to help with the process.
And, and I want to brag on Antoinette a little bit. She, she asked a ton of questions because she wanted to get it right. But in, in one, in a, in a couple of really key areas, she did an excellent job. And one of them is. And now you've got Ed there and, and, and some others, it sounds like. But in terms of understanding what message goes out to staff at different points, you know, like, you know, this is confidential at this point. I'm not going to go around sharing all the, the candidates' resumes and, you know, like understands. The, you know, where the process needs to be communicated out, where it's private and where to, how to message that is a really. Delicate and important thing that, that Antoinette absolutely got without any coaching from me. So, you know, there's a lot of, there, there's less turmoil right now than your last time, frankly, but. I mean, I, I can say that without even having talked to a bunch of staffers, but you're in a better place. But, you know, staff oftentimes in a transition have a lot of worries and all of their concerns about their, their position and. Their position in the organization and their future, you know, kind of come to the surface with it in a transition. And so it's a delicate time inside an organization and I, I just want to compliment Antoinette and how well she managed that.
Okay, board members, any? More discussion? Seems like we're talking about one path.
Yep, I agree.
I'm fine with it. Whether it's staff, I'm using John as a, as backup forum for questions and having him involved with that initial review of candidates as needed. Because it is a different situation.
But my point's the same. I would like to see people outside the government applying for the job. So I'd like the search expanded well, well outside the MCL group.
CML.
Colorado Municipal League.
Yeah.
That's not the group they were talking about.
No, right. So I'd like to see the search expanded way outside of that, see if we can find somebody that's not just another government employee, moving from one government job to another one.
Yeah, and one way you can address that, there's probably other ways you can address it too, but it's expensive. If you don't have to, I often advise against it, but given what you were just saying, actually taking some ads out. And definitely getting in the job ads for, you know, the Summit Daily, nearby, nearby newspapers, newspaper. Advertisements and postings are expensive, they just are. And I know that you need to do it for the whole month or whatever, but. A week or two in, you know, I can see somebody from, you know, from Summit County, somebody from Grand County, obviously. I don't know that Clear Creek has a good thing, but you know, maybe even Eagle County. Some of those places you might draw, and you can signal on those ads that you're interested in, in a wide variety of, of job experience, you know.
Is that satisfactory to you, Parnell?
Yeah, something, just something, someone that's not looking at other government officials looking for another government job.
We don't want, well, we'll know better when we do our interviews. We also want someone that has an idea how government runs. So our existing staff isn't holding their hand and it's taking staff time to train them to how to operate the town. It's a business, but it's not.
I would agree.
So, but that would happen, and maybe there is somebody out there that's really amazing.
Managing people is managing people. Managing teams is managing teams.
Yeah, but knowing what the board can do and what they can't do, and you know.
That's written in the document.
If it's a right candidate, then we'll entertain it.
Okay, so. We don't have a vote on this, right?
Well, actually, Eileen, if you, if you don't mind, if, if you want to give us to go ahead, then I will be working with John and with staff. We'll update that timeline. We'll put together, make sure that the, the job ad is updated and reflective of. Twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. You know, of course, the budget numbers, the staffing levels and so forth. And our town priorities have changed a bit in the past year and a half. We can update that if you would like. We could bring that back to the board in two weeks. Or if you, if you're okay with staff, we can go ahead and hit the streets with that and maybe have, have something in, posted. Probably by Monday or Tuesday of next week. And that would give us through the first week of December. To close out the ads and then we could spend the next week and a half, you know, reviewing, you know, meeting with, with John. You can even, if you wanted to, take a couple of trustees to, to meet with myself and with, with staff to be part of that review committee. And then select your, your, what they call the semifinalist list, where you can make some initial phone calls. Fill them out, get, get a sense of, you know, the background, their experience, and then narrow that down to a finalist list. But this is going to be a very transparent process. It has to be by state statutes. The, the board will be very involved with all of the decisions that are being made there. Because it is your decision. It's, it's not mine. It's not John's. It's not Antonette's. It's your decision and what's the best for the town of Frazier. And the only thing we can do is we can help that process because we've, we're experienced in it. We've, we've gone through this before and we can help maybe put the right people in place. Should be a successful recruitment.
So you'll be reviewing these on the operation, on the responsibilities stuff. Just a few of them seemed like they were more tailored when we didn't have support staff, and now we do have our staff in place. So. The manager shall submit a proposed annual budget and blah, blah, and be the town's budget officer. Rob is our finance manager. I see you're responsible for Rob, but is that, does that need to be tweaked?
No, it's still in our code. The code identifies me as, as the budget officer.
Okay.
I'm just fortunate that I have someone like Rob that can put the numbers together.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify for that, you, you know, you're. I, I'm thinking sole employee other than the attorney who I think is not in-house with you, you know, the board, the board manages. The town through the manager, which is part of the reason for that language, so that it's understood that the board isn't directly managing the finance manager. Or say the clerk or. Language so that it's understood that the board isn't directly managing the finance manager or say the clerk or. Some places do have the clerk, but. I can't remember which way yours, yours goes, but that's part of the reason for that language. It is. It ultimately is one of the great and challenging things about being managers. At the end of the day. You know, the buck stops at the manager and that's how the board views that job, right?
I, I guess. For you to have it out by Monday or Tuesday of next week. I would like. At least some of us to see it or Philip to see it. Or if you could just email it to all of us and give us a short frame time, you know, one day or two days to look at it.
Oh, we sort of made you that.
Yeah, and a one little thing may seem like a small thing, but it is occurring to me. I, I missed exactly if you're trying to get folks to. Submit applications before the holiday. Is that right?
That's what we said, yes.
Yeah, what, what date again are you thinking of again?
Of first part of December.
Okay. So once this is out in another week or so, you're definitely going to, yeah, okay. If for some reason these things, these cans get kicked a little bit. I absolutely think if you're not going to make that due date by, say, the fifteenth of December. You kick it into the first week of January. I, I, I really think it's not a good idea to have a due date that's. In that, in that scrambled holiday period for a lot of reasons. So if, if all, everything can get aligned and we can kick it out or you can kick it out. So that it is there for thirty days at least. Prior with, with a due date of December fifteenth or sooner, given that month and great. But if, if things get sort of compressed or there's a lot of review or back and forth. I, I would recommend making that the first week of January. So just heads up with that.
I understand that, but I think we can get it done before that.
I can make a recommendation, Eileen. Today's the second. We do not have a meeting on the ninth. We do have on the sixteenth. Between, we could have everything ready to go by the seventh. I would. Not like to do a lot of email communication back and forth with the board about, does this look good to you and, you know, weigh in and that's, that's, that kind of. Violates the Sunshine Act. We could bring it back to the board on the sixteenth. With a recommendation, this is the job ad, this is the job description, this is what we'd be posting. And we could post that on the seventeenth with a closeout of December the sixteenth. Or even the twenty-third. That would give us the thirty days. And then by the first week in January, we could be narrowing down and reviewing. Candidates and probably call for initial phone interviews the week of January the ninth. That would give you time to narrow that down some more. Have in-person interviews by the end of January, the first of February. And that would still give you two months to make a selection, to have somebody come on board. Even if they can't. If they're coming from out of state, you could always bring them in for a, like a two-week period. For a little overlap, a little training, a little get to know the staff and everything. And still have your manager in place by the end of March.
I, I'd agree with that proposal and the other thing that does is many good candidates are employed. And it's, if, if they are, are the kind of, you know, the kind of character you're looking for. They don't want to give their, they don't want to give a two-week notice probably on a, a significant job they have. They'd like to be able to say. Yeah, I need to button things up. So it's not uncommon to, to give, give them a month, you know, of, of. Pulling things together and, and closing out stuff and handing off wherever they're coming from. And that may not be necessary for who you choose, but if, if you want to always leave the opportunity for a really good candidate to. To, to exit gracefully, if that makes sense.
Okay, is that acceptable? To all of you?
I think it makes sense.
Maybe we won't have special meetings in December and January to speed the process up.
Right, I was thinking that too, yeah. Okay. Is that enough direction?
That's, that's. Eileen, that's, that's great. I will be reaching out. Of course, I'm out this week, but. I'll be, I'm working remotely tomorrow and I'll be in touch with Rob and with Antonette and with John. And we'll, we'll finalize that job ad and kind of get it ready for the sixteenth of, of November.
Okay. And then you wouldn't be working on it and actually looking at interviews until after the first, right?
Yeah, it'd be in June.
Right, that early January, perfect. Great. Okay, gentlemen, thank you, John. Thanks for making time for us.
Absolutely. Again, thanks for the invitation. I look forward to working with staff and I'm going to, I'm going to sign off. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next is a public hearing and public possible action on special event permit festival of trees. By Antonette. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So this is a public hearing because of for the town board to determine whether the application for the special event permit. For the Frazier Valley Lions Club Festival of Trees should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances and procedures of the town of Frazier. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, testimony by any interested parties in order to enable the board of trustees to make findings and reach conclusions regarding. Required to be made by state law as to whether or not the applicant should be approved or denied. Parties of the, parties of interest who are defined by state law as being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood. And owners or managers of businesses located in the neighborhood will have a chance to comment. The order of this here will be as follows. At the conclusion of my comments, I'm going to give a summary of the application. I will present on behalf of the applicant. They did not have to come tonight. Interested parties may testify against the proposed application. And at the conclusion of all the testimony, the board of trustees will make a decision to approve or deny the application. All testimony will be given under oath by the town clerk and any exhibits. Presented during the hearing will be submitted to the town clerk to become part of the record. And the clerk's official files are hereby admitted to the, into the record for this hearing. I may have the application for the special event permit. The resolution twenty twenty-two eleven oh one approval of the special event permit for the Frazier. Frazier River Valley Lions Club Festival of Trees. Any public comments, board of trustees, questions and motions to open and close the public hearing. So the Lions Club has. Applied for the special event permit for the festival trees. This is the seventeenth annual festival of trees. It will be held at the Recreation Center at One Main Street, Frazier, Colorado from four to eight P M. On December second. They submitted a complete application. They've paid all the fees and fools to the, in full to the town of Frazier. The notice for the public hearing was posted at the Grand Park Recreation Center on October twenty-first, ten days prior to the public hearing. Per the Colorado Vice Statutes forty-four dot three dot three eleven. And there will be alcohol. So during the event, they will be serving alcohol beverages. They are complimentary to the guests. There is no money. Received for the beverages, only donations made. They will have response, alcohol responsible trained servers to provide alcohol and non-alcoholic beverages to patrons. And they will be ID'd for their age. And at this time, we could see, does the board have any, any questions I can answer on behalf of the applicants? No. No. And is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to the? Public hearing.
Seeing none either place.
No, I don't see any online or physically. So I would ask the board, what is their desire to approve or to deny the special event permit application?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Frazier River Valley Lions. Do we need to close?
Close the public hearing first. I apologize.
There we go.
Yes.
Do you want, make a motion to close the public?
I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, now I'll continue with my motion to approve the application for the Frazier Valley Lions Club Festival of Trees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, the festival goes on. It's good because the signs are. I know we're making our. Decorations. Okay. Done with that. We've had. Public forum earlier. Clark, are you here to speak? Just, can, can you keep it to three minutes?
Do you mind?
You mind if you talk for three full minutes?
I can try to do it even faster, but.
Okay.
We'll see. Hi, it's Clark Lipscomb. I live at seven forty-eight, County Road seventy-three, Frazier and the developer Grand Park. I, I'm here tonight, voice some concerns that I'm having. And possibly over priorities of the town and processes in the town. And, and, you know, we've been dealing with projects. Residential projects that we've been trying to get done for a very long time. Plating processes. That seem to be getting prolonged and kind of never-ending comments. New engineering firms or new consulting firms. New law firms, all probably related to management aspects of what was just being discussed. But most recently, I've been asked to assist with our medical center. Who's having some permitting challenges and I think we need a medical center desperately. I think we need housing desperately. I think we all know we've needed housing desperately. And I think we know my company's tried to deliver a lot more housing than in fact we're even delivering today. And unfortunately, that's been stalled, delayed or otherwise denied. For whatever reason, and that's unfortunate for our community, but I don't want to lose sight of what our community needs are. And the priorities of our community and it's concerning to me that a medical center. Has been put back through a very lengthy process at a huge cost to them. With the same plans that have been through the process before. And that their own architects, Davis Group, kind of a substantial firm, can't get through it without asking me to assist with them. And, and it speaks to some of the things you're trying to address. It's something that I think you need to keep at the top of mind. Is our community's priorities. This is a small community. We need housing desperately. I would like every worker in this community to live right here in the town of Frazier and be able to ride their bikes to work. And everybody knows and all of you in this room, no, I have tried. And tried really hard and had big, big projects that got stalled, stopped or otherwise canceled. Due to these processes. So I want you guys to know about this. I've asked Ed, current manager. To explain some of these comments and he was going to look into it for me. I understand he's out this week. Hopefully we'll get together next week. And can get to the bottom of, of what's going on with the medical center and get them a building permit so they can start moving forward. But I want you all as trustees to be aware of the situation. And understand, we have a number of other projects that are also kind of mired down in years and years of. Reviews and comments and we'd like to get them wrapped up and start getting some housing built in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Clark. The mill project's looking good. Mill apartments and you've got that. Believe it, they've been working very hard. Come along. Okay, does anyone have any updates? My question will be for Michael, I think, and Ed. I was reading in the CML publication that starting January twenty-three, the state is mandating a ten cent fee on disposable bags. Right. So how does that affect our program? Does it make our local bags thirty cents? I, I tried to get in on the. CML class today, but somehow I didn't make the connection. Okay. I think it does not. To find anything out about that, how that's going to affect us?
Katie, to answer your question, that's, you know, our local bag fee is based on our code. If the state adds a ten cent. It'd be up to the board of trustees whether or not they want to maintain the twenty cent bag fee for Frazier. In addition to the ten cent fee or to reduce that. So it's, it's really the board's decision what to do there.
My understanding is that. This, this law or. Does not affect communities that are already doing it.
One, does the ten cent mandate go to the state or does it stay in the municipality?
Goes to the state, I'm pretty sure. Might be, it might be a split just like ours is. Yeah, probably, I would guess it would be a split with five cents to the state and five cents to. What? The bit five, half to the business is collecting the fee for their costs. And the other half to the state. For their recycling efforts. Um, I'm guessing that that would be the case because that's what we do.
Michael, Michael will be back the first of next week. We can both look into that.
Okay.
To get, taking an answer for you about the sixteen.
Great, I think that's just something to plan ahead for. And Mary Ann's Trail. Do you know about Mary Ann's Trail, Ed?
I, I do.
So I saw that the one section is completed.
That's correct.
Store as, and I'm assuming that's going to be it for this year.
That is for this year. There was a question about going through some of the rendezvous property. We had an agreement, of course, rendezvous wanted to look back. At the easements they were going to grant to us. So we're working on that with rendezvous now. So we did what work we could do this year and we'll finish up the project next year once we iron out those easements to the rendezvous property.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
The other thing I have is we should get our planning commission back on track. So we can start talking to the planners so that they understand how we work as a community versus how they think we work as a community. Such as people, you know, moving dirt on their property or told they're not allowed to do that anymore. They need a permit to do that. So I think our planning commission needs to be back on track. We haven't had a planning committee, meeting in eight months.
There is a planning commission meeting at the end of November and also at the end of December. So we have two, two meetings scheduled. Coming up. If you have some specific guidance that you would like for us to address, Parnell, please give me a shout.
Well.
I. I believe something is ready to be presented at our next meeting, which might be about.
We don't have.
But that's what baseline told.
We don't have a chair for the planning commissioner.
Right. We haven't had a meeting yet. Well, the date I was given was November sixteenth. Now, that's our next meeting.
Sorry, it's be the twenty-third.
I see. Okay.
And we have two items on that. Let's see, I. I'm drawing a blank right now what those two items are. As soon as they get back to my office, I will make sure that. I'm drawing a blank right now what those two items are. As soon as they get back to my office, I'll, I will make sure that we get it done.
You had them in the updates.
Okay, anyone else for updates?
I attended the Northwest Transportation Planning Region meeting, uh, earlier this week, last week, I guess it was. Um, Rebecca Kaufman from Winter Park attended as well. It was her first, um, meeting, so good to get another representative on our side of Grand County.
Great.
Um, Keith was there too. The three of us just met at Winter Park Town Hall to, to watch the meeting because, uh, C-Dot was not overly confident that they could clear the roads with the snowstorm that day. So, they, they moved it to Zoom, so it was quite ironic, but, um, the big takeaway from the meeting was that, uh, C-Dot is still trying to hire, um, CDL drivers to plow, and so, um, yeah, it's kind of the same story as, as last year at this point, not I didn't hold out a lot of hope after hearing what they had to say. So, glad we're pretty well staffed up for the town of Frazier at least.
So I, I do have an update. Um, on Friday, I attended a, uh, a meeting in Pueblo. It was called the Tax Increment Financing Housing Summit. It's, uh, it was hosted by Downtown Colorado, Inc. Um, that's an organization that has helped municipalities throughout Colorado, um, to revitalize their downtown, to address, uh, uh, things like blight and bring in more economic and urban development. Um, and recently, uh, using, uh, Tiff financing for housing. I thought it was a fantastic conference. Um, I learned a lot of great information. On November the sixteenth, uh, we have a work session scheduled with the board to discuss, uh, you know, some of the funding opportunities that we can bring to the table to make sure that Victoria Village uh, can be developed and to be developed, uh, and meet those AMI, uh, targets, uh, that we're, they were aiming for. There's a lot of, uh, financing opportunities that are available, uh, uh, to Frazier currently, and also maybe with some policy changes um, could, uh, really open the door to, uh, to have a successful partnership. So I'll be bringing those ideas to the board, uh, in a work session, uh, for a good discussion. Uh, we have until basically September of twenty twenty-four to begin, uh, construction on Victoria Village. Uh, our selection process is, um, essentially closed out. The, all the, the, the bids in, the request for qualifications are in now. Uh, there's a review committee that we'll be meeting next week, um, to go through those and bring in recommendations to the board uh, to choose a developer. Uh, the date for the selection for the developer is the first meeting in December. Uh, and that gives us a lot of good time to have some good conversations about, uh, about how we're going to make Victoria Village successful. Uh, so, anyway, um, if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to, to talk with you individually, but, uh, like I said, it was a great, it was a great meeting, a great opportunity, and I'm so happy I had a chance to go to that.
Okay. Anything else?
Did get nine applications for that request for qualifications, so really good response.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's a lot of reading.
I bet. Well, I guess one quick one. On the buyer's Ave meeting on Thursday, on next Thursday, will it be able to be available to folks that don't live here, um, remotely through this format?
We can certainly, uh, include a, uh, a Zoom link. We sent a letter out already
Yeah.
to the residents. We're posting that on the website. Um, and we're even going to be tacking notices on doors for that meeting. Um, it will be at, I think it's six o'clock on Thursday, November the tenth, next Thursday.
Six or seven.
Six, I think, yes.
Anyway, I've got my calendar. I was forgetting it was seven. Oh. Anyway, good, thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Probably the earliest adjournment ever.
Huh? Been a long time.